So I wanted to welcome everybody to tonight's Board of Trustees work session agenda. The date is November 23rd, 2021, and the time is 6:12. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and we can rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So since tonight is a work session, we do not have public comment tonight, but we do have a number of board presentations. The first presentation is about the dredging design for Old Town Pond. We're actually going to withdraw that board presentation, and we're going to move that to a future date before the end of the year. There's a lot of good work going on there. I'll talk about that at the end. But we do have Nelson Poken Vories doing the dredging study report for Lake Agawam. But we'll keep on moving. So number two is the East End Financial Group, the annual review regarding Lo Sap. So I'll let our administrator and treasurer Charlene take care of that. Charlene, you're...
Yes, Kat, would you be able to bring in, I think Jeff is on the call?
Jeff Connolly?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. He can come over right now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So apparently, there has been, I spoke to Jeff the other day, and annually, the East End Financial Services in Riverhead is a local firm that manages the investments for the Lo Sap for both the fire and the ambulance. And every year, Jeff will come in and give a presentation to the board on how those assets are performing. And without further ado, Jeff Connolly from East End Financial.
Yes, thank you very much, Charlene. And I actually have two of my other colleagues on as well, Anne Marie Zelnicky and Joseph Kozinski. So it'd be possible to bring them in. And then we'll go through the presentation quickly and answer any questions on the Lo Sap investments.
All right, I have Anne Marie Zelinski coming in. And is it Jay Kozinski?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, they're coming in also. So Anne Marie is already in. So Anne Marie, if you want to start your camera.
All right, and we also sent around a copy of the presentation, but I will share my screen if that's okay, just so, you know, we're all on the same page, and it's a little easier to follow along.
Yes, board members, it should be in your packet.
Okay, good job.
Right. Yes, I'm going to jump in here. I'm Anne Marie Zelnicky, the president of East End Financial Group, along with my partner, Joseph Kozinski, and you just met Jeff Connolly, our lead analyst. I wanted to give you, in your packet, you see a little bit of background, as Charlene said, about the East End Financial Group, and I was working with Lo Sap since their inception in 1990 in New York State. And we have been working with the Village of Southampton since May 2018. We came on with Stephen Funch as the administrator, and we have been working hand in hand with the various administrators since that point. We're sorry we can't meet in person today because there's a number of you that we have not met in person, you know, but hopefully, going forward, you know, we can have, once again, a face-to-face meeting, which would be nice. One point I wanted to, Jeff, if you want to go to the second page, to point out that makes us stand apart here is that we actually have a dedicated Lo Sap team. So, I mean, Charlene can tell you she works hand in hand with Jeff. She also works very closely with Connie Tobin, who handles all the operations of the day-to-day needs of the Lo Sap plan within the fire department. So any one of us that's listed, you know, on this team here can be reached, can be called, and, you know, it's our responsibility to make sure everything goes smoothly for you and for your firefighters that are receiving the actual benefits from the plan. Now, Jeff, if you want to go into the nuts and bolts of the portfolio itself.
So I'll provide an update on where the portfolio is right now, and a little bit of commentary on our outlook for the rest of this year into next year. So this is just for the Fire Department Length of Service Award Program.
Right, and did want to note, Charlene, we do not handle the ambulance, only the fire department.
Yes. So the total account balance, $5,812,000. All these numbers are as of November 17th. I ran them last week. And so far, the portfolio's had a year-to-date gain of eight and a half percent. And in dollar terms, that's $444,000 so far this year. And since East End started managing the Lo Sap assets back in June of 2018, the accounts had an average annual return of 9.2% for a cumulative gain of $1,387,000. And the funded ratio, which is a measure of the planned assets to planned liabilities, is 94%. And that's a measure that the actuary puts together to look at if the plan stopped on that date, what percentage of benefits could be paid out. And 94% was as of January 1st of this year. And when we started working with the village back in 2018, the funded ratio was 66%. So combination of investment returns and the village actually contributing additional funds for a few years really helped get the plan back up to 94. And based on how this year's going, we'd expect another increase towards 100. Being 100% funded is the goal, but you have changes in mortality and other actuarial assumptions that can change that impact that.
Right, and I just want to highlight that because that is significant, you know, and you should pat yourselves on the back for this. I mean, coming all the way from the mid, you know, six is 66%, you know, to where we are today and to hopefully, you know, at the end of the plan year, as Jeff said, to hit that 100%. It's quite an accomplishment.
Right, and I would also point out that the plan assumes a 5% rate of return each year. So this year, we're at eight and a half. So so far, we've exceeded that. Hopefully, things continue the way they have, and we'll get some decent returns in the next month. So in this table, you can see just the two different accounts. They're at Pershing, which is a subsidiary of Bank of New York Mellon. And there are two different strategies that we implement there for the Lo Saps that we manage. And the total portfolio is being managed with a blend of 50% equities to 50% fixed income. And that's based on the investment policy statement that the village board and the mayor signed. That investment policy statement gives us the discretion to increase the allocation to 60% equities or down to 40% equities based on our outlook, asset class valuations, a number of different things that we look at. So right now, the portfolio is 54% in stocks and 46% in bonds. So we're a little bit more aggressive than what we'd normally be, what the neutral allocation would be. Within the equity holdings, 97% are, or 79%, excuse me, are in large-cap stocks. And those are companies like Apple, JP Morgan, Johnson &amp; Johnson, the large household names. And the balance, or about 21%, is in small and mid-cap stocks. Those are stocks that are smaller, have higher return potential, but also have higher risk. Then international stocks make up 14% of the total portfolio. The fourth point here on beta, that's a risk metric that we look at internally, and we use a lot to measure our portfolios. That is point four eight, and that's about 48% of the volatility experienced by the S&amp;P 500. So beta compares your portfolio to an all-stock portfolio, being the S&amp;P 500 index, which has a beta of one. So we would expect that you'd see around half the volatility when the market sells off, but then get about half of the return when the market rises. And then the last point is just another risk metric that we look at. Credit quality for all the bonds, on average, is investment grade. The average maturity is a little over five years, and duration is a little over three. Duration is a measure that looks at interest rate sensitivity of a portfolio. So if you guys have picked up the financial press in the last month, you all know inflation's a little bit higher. The Federal Reserve is winding down its asset purchase program, and is probably going to start raising rates next year. So that's why we're running a duration that's lower in the portfolio versus the benchmark, just to help protect from some of the impact of rising rates. So that's a quick summary of where the portfolio is right now. Our outlook going forward is that stocks will continue to trend a little bit higher. We have a pretty negative outlook for fixed income, just because, like I mentioned, rising rates typically is negative for bond prices. And with the economy continuing to recover and normalize, and the Federal Reserve starting to raise rates, we'd expect bonds might be flat or slightly negative next year. And equities will have better performance. So I'll just pause there and happy to answer any questions on how the Lo Sap is invested at the moment, or what we think, you know, over the next couple of months, next year going forward.
Thank you very much, Jeff.
All right, so then just in the report, the next two pages.
Jeff, just hold on one second. Mary Warren, do you have additional questions or?
I wanted to see if the board has any questions, but Jeff, feel free to keep on going. I can ask a few questions at the end, but thank you very much.
Okay. So just the next two pages are just, you know, internal metrics that we use to analyze the portfolio, and a lot of the things that I referenced in that last page come from this report. There's a lot of info there, but happy to dive into it if you guys have any more questions. And then Anne Marie, I'll just ask you to touch on the scholarship.
Sure. So several years ago, we knew we wanted to give back to our local communities. We work with fire districts from Montauk, you know, all the way out into western Nassau County. And we wanted to, you know, be a part of what the fire districts are doing in some way. You know, a lot of our staff here, they're volunteer firemen, voluntary ambulance workers, you know, some of our staff work in the, or their spouses work in the New York City Fire Department, and we wanted to do our share. So actually, Joe, I'll give him credit, and Jeff came up with the idea of creating a fire district scholarship program. We make this available to all the districts that we work with each year. And the students, which are seniors, you know, in high school, or junior firefighters within your department that are graduating that year can complete an application that's given to you normally in the fall, submit it to your board, or some districts or towns have scholarship committees. And then the town or the district chooses one person to submit to us to be, you know, offered into the scholarship program. The scholarships are anywhere from $1,000 down to $250. Every student that is chosen by a district and submitted to our office gets some sort of scholarship. We do leave it up to our advisory board at East End, which is made up of outside professionals, tax and legal professionals, as well as existing clients, to choose the students, to rank them in order of first down to, you know, however many there are. And then each year, you know, we do notify the districts of the winner. So it's just our way of giving back to the community to say thank you for everything that the fire districts do for us and for the community. I will note that we haven't received an application in the last three, four years from Southampton. So please promote it, you know, amongst your students.
Anne Marie, exactly. I was going to ask you that question of when is the application process, when are resumes due? And what does that application entail?
So Jeff, have you sent out Southampton chat?
We did mail out the packet, but Charlene, if you did not get it, I can send another one or also send PDF version if that's easier to distribute that to.
Right. Yeah, we normally ask that to be back around March 1st. And then we're normally issuing the scholarships in early May, I would say, we notify you. And then, you know, it's like, do you want to give them out? Do you want us to send it over to the high school for them to give it out? You know, it's your choice, but we'd like to get Southampton to be involved because I know you have a lot of great students there at the high school.
Excellent. What were the age ranges?
It's a senior in high school, senior in high school, you know. So you have to, they have to be affiliated with the fire department. They have to be the grandchild, the, you know, the daughter of a current firefighter, or if you have a junior firefighter program and that firefighter is a senior in high school, they also would be eligible. It's going to be affiliated with a member of the fire department.
Okay, thank you, Anne Marie.
You're welcome.
Back to questions on the portfolio, and I would like to turn this over to the board. And we can keep on moving on here. I was actually wondering if Jeff, if you can talk about if there's any climate or sustainability orientation of the portfolio, and if not, if there's any consideration for that.
So we do not, at the moment, have any climate or sustainability mandates. That's something that if the board decided to go that route, we could implement. But we need to take that direction from the board in order to do that.
Thank you. And would you advise us to change the mandate? You mentioned that there's a range of equities and a range of fixed income. I actually thought that maybe the fixed income was a bit high, given the inflationary environment, but obviously, we don't, you are the investment professionals. But if there's any range that you would actually like us to put into place, we would, of course, appreciate your guidance.
So do you want to jump in, Joe, on the highs and lows that we have within the existing investment policy statement?
Yeah, with Zoom, it's so hard. I don't want to talk over anybody, but I can answer that question pretty dark. I've been working with Lo Sap for the last 15 years. And you just have to understand how Lo Saps are managed, right? And you're 100% right with the fixed income environment, they're going to, your fixed income is really to be a ballast in the portfolio if the market was to sell off. And what I want to get to with Lo Saps is different from individual investment assets. And you have to, if you scroll back to the top, Jeff, hit an assumed interest rate over a period of time. And your portfolio, the assumed interest rate is 5%. So our goal is to really reduce risk in the portfolio now that you're so close to being 100% funded. But the range that we've recommended since the beginning, a 50/50 target, and Jeff, I'll let you kind of go towards this at the end. We are going more towards the higher end of that at 60/40 because we do 100% agree with what you're saying with the fixed income side being where the risk is for the next, I would say, short-term, two to three years. So you're right, and I'll let Jeff kind of continue with that.
And we have made some changes, actually quite a bit of changes, in the fixed income side of the portfolio. So like I mentioned before, with a duration of just over three, the benchmark that most investors will look at for bonds is the U.S. Barclays Aggregate Bond Index, and that runs a duration close to seven. So that our portfolio, we've really taken the interest rate sensitivity down by changing the maturity and duration of some of the bonds that we hold. And we've also added some bonds that actually have a floating rate. So as rates rise, the coupons would reset. But like Joe mentioned, you got to take a step back. And, you know, the only thing that's going to go up when the stock market sells off is going to be high-quality government bonds. And since we know that we have to consistently pay out benefits, we have to keep that as a component of the portfolio. So I think you'll see us on the higher end of that range of the asset allocation, closer to 55, 60% for the near term. If we did feel that that asset allocation couldn't achieve the assumed interest rate over time, we would come to the board and say, we need to have a discussion. You know, this portfolio needs to be adjusted in order to get that assumed rate of return. But we still think over time that the current asset allocation works.
Okay, thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
One last point I wanted to touch on, which I did in the beginning, and said, in addition to us, the other people involved with the Lo Sap plan are the plan administrators, which in your case is Penflex, company out of upstate New York. So that's the one that's producing your, you know, your plan valve. Each year, they're coming up with your numbers, they're working on your emerging liabilities with you. You pay them separately, they're separate from us on the investment side. And the third party is Comerica. So that's who Penflex chooses to work on paying out the benefits, you know, issuing 1099s to your fire event. So there's kind of three partners in this to make the Lo Sap plan work, in addition to yourself on the board.
All right.
Any other follow-up questions?
I think we have a question from trustee Stevenson.
Sorry, my microphone was muted. Sorry. What was the level of outflow for benefit payments in the last year? How much of the portfolio do you have to liquidate to make your payment?
Just let pass it, Jeff.
I was going to jump down here. So this is the emerging liabilities table that the actuary puts together. So you can see, I don't have 2020, but for this year, there's $167,000 in payments that, you know, are scheduled to go out to members. And like every other fire district or Lo Sap plan that's run by a town or village, you have a lot of members that are getting to entitlement age, and they've been a volunteer for, you know, 20, 30 years. So the benefits are accruing pretty quickly. By 2025, you know, it almost doubles to 322,000.
And we see that across many districts and villages. 2025 is the year.
And one of the strategies that we have implemented in Lo Saps before I was here, I think since the beginning when they started, is, you know, laddering out individual bonds so that we know that cash is coming available to pay out these benefits. That way, if it's a situation like March 2020, where we know we have to pay benefits, we don't have to sell stocks when they're down double digits, or a situation like 2008, 2009, where the market took a lot longer to recover, there's cash coming into the portfolio to make those benefit payments because that's really the purpose of this plan, is to pay out those benefits to the volunteers.
I have a quick question as well. So you mentioned the 10 or 30-year cap. Is that a cap? So you match that at 30 years?
Or volunteers? So that depends on the individual plan. I think that information is on the last page of the document, so just give me a second to scroll down there.
Again, what Jeff is showing is the plan valuation report. This is not our document. This is provided by Penflex.
Right, that's correct. This is from Penflex. So for your plan, the, yes, 30 years is the cap on service credits. They could earn 30 years of credit, but then if they're still an active member, they would also get the post-entitlement lump sum payment as well. I mean, I believe that there's legislation that passed in Albany that allows districts or villages to increase that service credit cap. I believe to 40 years, but I'll give you more definitive guidance on that.
Thank you.
And Roy and Joseph, one good thing to have, and we do this with most of our plans in the spring, which is typically, well, you're June 30th year-end, so you might be a little bit different.
April 31st.
Okay, we typically like to have the plan administrators come in with us and so that you have, again, both parties that are working for you, sitting at the table with you, you know. So you can really delve into these plan administration questions, as well as hand in hand with the investment questions. It's good to have at least once a year to have everybody there at one time, even if it's via Zoom.
Yeah, and I'll just make one last on this page here, which is, you could see 65 entitlement age in 30 years. One of the things that might be smart to do is, once it hits 100% funded, to have a discussion to offer maybe a different benefit to your members.
And go all the way down to 55 if you want to, you know, the plan a lot more.
And we have districts and villages that have 55, 60, 62. And so it's something, I wouldn't discuss it now. Obviously, you're not 100% funded yet. But when you get to that level, that's something that many of other plans definitely address. And that would, you would bring Penflex in, you would do a study to see what the cost would be because obviously, it's increasing costs when you reduce anything or give a larger benefit out. So something to think about in the future, and you're so close. And it's like, Anne Marie said, I give you a lot of credit because it took a lot to make a change, and you did the right thing, and you're in a great place now.
And obviously, the purpose of the Lo Saps from their inception in 1990 was to entice enrollment, to lock in those firemen. So again, if you could lower that entitlement age, you know, makes it more attractive to those volunteers.
All right, excellent. Thank you very much for the help tonight. And we look forward to continuing to work with you and your team. So appreciate your time this evening. Have a happy Thanksgiving, and we'll see you.
Same to all of you.
Flip us out of the break.
Right. And again, Charlene, would love to, again, do this possibly in the spring with also having Penflex on the call.
Absolutely. And Jeff, if you could send me that PDF for the scholarship information, that would be great. I did not get anything in the mail at this point.
Okay, of course. I'll get that over you tomorrow.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Okay, we keep on moving with board presentations tonight. The next board presentation is the dredging study. We've got Chick Voorhees from NPV here. And this is a update as the dredging study, sampling and work going on at Lake Agawam.
He's on his way in, Mayor.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Hi, Chick, you're in.
Good evening.
Hello.
Good evening.
Thank you, Cat. I would like to share a screen and just say thank you for having me to the board meeting tonight. And I'll be using a PowerPoint presentation that I hope will be informative. And of course, we'll have the opportunity for questions and discussion. Is that visible?
Loading.
Chick, it's a black screen right now.
Hey, it says that I'm screen sharing and I...
You are. You're screen sharing a black screen.
Not good.
All right, let me take the screen share down.
It's frozen because I'm trying to stop the share and try it again, and it's not letting me.
There you go.
There we go.
That's better.
Give me one second to set it up.
Yep, you're all good.
Okay, that should be visible.
It is.
All right, so this is the dredging assessment report for the interim meeting, which is tonight. This project is prepared and funded through the state DEC under a contract that's shown on the screen. And that's an important factor. I will be providing one additional presentation under the contract. And of course, we're working with Jennifer Messiano, who helps secure the funds for this project, which is great. Just by way of background, my name is Chick Voorhees of Nelson Pope Voorhees. I'm a principal in the company and have been a long-term consultant to the village. So we also did the initial study, which was a screening study in 2019. I believe that's still on the village website. The date of that report is November 11th, 2019. And I'm just going to provide a couple of brief slides to kind of go through the background because the current study builds off this original report. So that was a screening assessment, which means that it did not have a DEC work approved prior to sampling because that adds a lot to the cost. But it gave us an idea of the quality of the materials and began the characterization process of sediments in Lake Agawam. So we took four samples in the north part of the lake and two samples in the south part of the lake. We determined the quality of the silty material, the soft sediment, and also the depth of the soft sediment. And that was for the area from the bend in Pond Lane north to Agawam Park. That report also outlined dredging options and preliminary costs at that time. So this is a color map of the differential between the hard bottom and the soft bottom. The blue and purple colors are the deepest sediments, and the sediment depth varied from 0 to 8.2 feet. And the volume from that bend in Pond Lane to the north was about 65,000 cubic yards of soft sediment. The sieve analysis showed that the material did not meet the 90% sand content to avoid detailed chemical analysis. And it did confirm that it was a mixture of sand with quite a bit of silt material in it. The analytical sampling did show that there was lead and arsenic, two metals, that exceeded the state DEC protection of groundwater, or POG, guidance values. And there were some pesticides, one of which did also exceed protection of groundwater. There were low or no VOCs, SVOCs, and I'll also add, there were very no non-traceable herbicides in that original report. And this table just shows the sampling results from that report. The dredging portion of that report described in fairly great detail what goes into a dredging project. And I've been involved with dredging projects since the beginning of my career, having worked at Suffolk County in the Department of Environmental Control, and later the Health Department on dredging type projects. So first, you have to remove the material. We looked at mechanical and hydraulic methods, and hydraulic dredging seems to be the most appropriate for Lake Agawam. So that basically means you put a dredge in the lake, and you create a slurry, and you pump it to some dewatering process in order to dry it out, to remove it. The second part is dewatering. Dewatering typically requires space. When I worked on dredging projects with the county, we created dyke areas to allow the material to drain off and dry out. When Upper Lake Yapek in the town of Brookhaven was dredged under my supervision a couple of years ago, we had old sand mines that we pumped the material to. So when I say no good options for the purpose of dewatering, that's really a true statement that was explored in detail in this report because there are very few areas to lay down areas for dewatering, use of geotextile materials to dewater. And I'll talk about that a little more, but you need space. And in the case of Lake Agawam, just because of the surrounding land use and areas, there are no real good options. Material loading has to occur so that it can go ultimately to a disposition location. And so that involves the fourth component, which is material transport and disposal. And that involves trucking. And that involves trucking to some location through the village, obviously, which causes activity and disruption. And in the original report, it was determined that most material would likely, most if not all material would likely have to be transported off Long Island because of those protection of groundwater standards. So also, that report considered a potential project which involved the use of the trustees parking lot at the south end of Gin Lane for dewatering. That's because it's a fairly large area. It is proximate to the lake. It can be done with a lower potential for environmental impacts. And we could include, I'm sorry, consider other sites that could even include Agawam Park. Obviously, that is filled with difficulties and challenges and may not be socially or environmentally acceptable. So these were just test cases to really look at how it could occur if there were areas that were identified that the village might find palatable to proceed with. We did find that even using the trustees parking lot, there's a limited capacity. It cannot contain the full project using geotextile dewatering bags, even just for the north side of the lake, which was sixty five thousand cubic yards. And of course, there would be activity. There's a potential for odor, but we did a lot of research on this, and I've done research for other projects that odors are fairly minimal, even with silky sediment, and it can be controlled by addition of odor control mechanisms. And even without it, there's, there's very little potential for odor. And I mentioned trucks through the village and the disruptive nature of that activity. We looked at costs. News is not great here, but it's important to understand that project planning can take place. If we considered hypothetically dredging the north part of the lake and considered hypothetically use of the trustees lot and possibly part of Gin Lane, which has its own challenges, the dewatering capacity of that area is twenty seven thousand cubic yards. And that, that actually involves using part of Gin Lane. It would take approximately three seasons to complete just the north part of the lake. And the cost based on factors that we derived from the original study, and this is table two from that study, which was the moderate cost area. We did look at it from the standpoint of conservative costs and low costs would be approximately sixteen point five million just for the north end. So the ultimate findings of that initial report were that there was metals contamination with silt. It's about sixty five thousand cubic yards. Dewatering areas are very limited. There's a substantial cost factor. Dewatering and material transport would be disruptive to the village. And there were certain recommendations that involved proceeding with a more detailed testing study of the entire lake. Do that under a DEC approved work plan, working with the State Department of Materials Management. Quantify the full amount of sediment in the lake. Continue to seek methods for dredging and dewatering. And then, of course, continue all of the other great things that the village is doing that you're very aware of. My office has been tracking and been involved with some of them to continue to, to improve Lake Agawam. We know from earlier studies that there's no silver bullet or magic bullet here, and we need many incremental improvements in order to beneficially impact the water quality of Lake Agawam. And that was also verified through the DEC HAVES Action Plan that was released fairly recently. Now we get into the current study with that background in mind. We did obtain, first we prepared a work plan. Then we obtained DEC approval of that work plan from Materials Management to conduct the sampling. We performed the sampling of Lake Agawam. We also performed soundings similar to the north side and determined the hard bottom and soft bottom of the lake. And that gave us the ability to generate the differential mapping for the quantity of material. The SAP, which stands for Sampling and Analysis Program Report, was submitted to the DEC. The DEC scheduled the meeting and we discussed the report. And sometime after that meeting, the DEC issued a letter, which I'll talk about. And, and, and the findings of the DEC. And we are continuing and very much in the process of researching methods of dredging and dewatering and are working on and have made great progress on the overall report that will provide all of the information that we're talking about. This is just the map of the differential in sediments. You can see the table that shows the depth quantities by color at zero to two feet being red, two to four feet orange, four to six being the yellow, six to eight being the green, eight to ten the blue, and ten to twelve feet of sediment is the fuchsia color. Which I hope my eyesight is seeing properly. So we determined that the hard and soft bottom depths and created this digital map. And the total sediment quantity that we're estimating based on this information is three hundred and thirty six thousand four hundred and twenty five cubic yards for the entire lake of soft sediment. And that depth ranges from zero to twelve feet, deepest being in the central part of the lake, which you can see in the fuchsia color in the middle. The SAP had fourteen sample locations. This is a map that will be included in the report and was included in the sampling and analysis report where the red dots on, you can see the four at the north end of the lake and the two just west of the bend in Gin Lane are the original sampling locations. And the green locations are the fourteen new locations under the DEC approved work plan. And then we also took some additional samples around to the locations in the prior study that had elevated results. The sampling and analysis plan did confirm the fine material throughout the lake. We did Civ analysis on the material, and it was very consistent with the findings of the twenty nineteen screening study. Also similarly confirmed arsenic and lead, some pesticides and some VOCs. Again, no herbicides, PCBs or VOCs. What was interesting was the original screening study in the north end of the lake, we were somewhat expecting higher concentrations in those areas because of the stormwater inputs to the lake through the pipe at the north end. And it turned out that that material, maybe because it's fine, and there must be transport within the lake, is really throughout the lake. So, you know, we were hoping maybe we could, you know, isolate areas that had higher concentrations. But really, as this indicates, out of the fourteen samples, ten of them exceeded the protection of groundwater for arsenic. One exceeded POG for pesticides. And so eleven of the fourteen samples were greater than protection of groundwater. And I'll, I'll break down the DEC input through this and a couple of additional slides. But this is their finding from their review, which was contained in a letter that I believe has been previously circulated and will be part of the final report. And they found that the material would most likely, was their terminology, need to be transported off Long Island. When I did ask at a meeting if there are any potential solutions for beneficial use determination known as a BUD or other options that they may be aware of through their other experiences, they did not identify any other opportunities. So at this point, it appears as though off island disposal would be needed. And that is consistent with the costing provisions that we used as assumptions for the original report. They also indicated that dewatering of the material, they would like to see a plan for sampling of that water that's returned to the lake. The hope is that it would not require any special handling, but they, they did indicate in the letter they would like it to be sampled. And these are the exact points from their letter. They talked about in lake soil retention to reduce the removal of materials by retaining some material in the lake and capping it and using it to create marsh. If we just created an island or a peninsula, they said that would be considered fill in a freshwater wetlands, and it would not be permitted. But if it's created as marsh, that potentially could reduce the amount of material that's removed. We're going to talk about that as an option. But I will say, you know, it has some negative aspects, one of which I questioned the DEC members about having it be vegetated with an appropriate freshwater marsh vegetation. And in our opinion, based on the perimeter of the lake, it would be very hard to establish a quality wetland. But the DEC came back and said that Fragmites is a wetland indicator. So you kind of can envision it, and we'll talk a little more about it. But, you know, we thought about it, and the DEC did mention this because it was a method that was used in a lake in the town of Brookhaven. But it also has certain downsides. It did indicate that if we dredge to a sand and gravel bottom, that the, the state would not require testing of the exposed lake bottom, which is good, that saves costs. Under Seeker or the State Environmental Quality Review Act, they felt there would likely be a type one action. What that means is that the village, if the village is in fact lead agency going forward, would have to prepare a part, a part one EAF and provide coordination for lead agency. Type one action does not necessarily mean an environmental impact statement is needed. And we would work with the DEC to ensure that environmental impacts are mitigated. So it was really just a point of information as we proceed. And the state did say they would agree that if the village is the project proponent at some point in the future, that the village would be a good lead agency for this project. And as we submit for Article twenty four freshwater wetlands permits to the DEC to dredge the lake in the future, this would be a public notice application, considered a major project and would require a fifteen day comment period. So these were just points of information for the future. So in terms of the dredging assessment, don't get too alarmed by this graphic. But it does kind of look back at the original study and translates it to some of the findings of the current study that's ongoing and we're, we're talking about tonight. So we did consider off season dredging of the, of the lake to a dewatering site. We had a contract contractor that provides G O two materials, and that's trademarked. And they laid out what they call a lay down area that would include Gin Lane and the trustees parking lot. This is what it looks like if you were going to contain twenty seven thousand cubic yards of material. It would involve placement of geotextile tubes. And I said before, no good options. This could be done, you know, on Pond Lane property, Agawam Park. But again, it's, it's quite alarming and, you know, subject to social aesthetic and other concerns. However, if we did use this area, based on the total quantity of material in the lake, it would require twelve to thirteen seasons for dewatering to remove the material from the lake in this fashion with one event per year, because time has to be provided for dewater. After dewatering, material would need to be loaded on trucks at the south end of the lake and transported through the village to a disposal location that would be determined ahead of time through waste characterization and approvals to an off island location. And this could involve as many as thirty trucks per day for thirty days each spring, removing the material. That's obviously disruptive and inconvenient. But again, we're building on the information from the original report and translating it to the full quantity of material in the lake. Applying cost factors to that, and again, it gets a little bit alarming if you're reading ahead. But based on the twenty nineteen screening study, we computed the cost per cubic yard of material. And this included all of the aspects of dredging that I talked about before. Removal, dewatering, loading, trucking, and disposal. And you can see the conservative numbers based on the sixty five thousand cubic yards ranged from almost ten million up to over fourteen million for the sixty five thousand cubic yard volume. You can see the cost per cubic yard ranging from one fifty to two sixteen per yard. And if you apply that to the total volume of the lake using those same numbers, the, the cost range is anywhere from fifty one to seventy two million dollars. Now, these are all approximate costs. They're based on the twenty nineteen numbers. We don't have any reason to believe that they've changed substantially. And it's also subject to contractor bidding. Once you introduce competition and creativity through the industry, we find that contractors do look to be competitive and you know, we would hope that measures could be taken to reduce these costs. But I just want to put those qualifiers out there that ultimately it's a bidding process for a large project. And you would hope that some creativity and cost savings could be realized. So as we look at these factors, it really is quite alarming. And so we want to talk about things that can be done to make it more feasible. And, and I've actually prepared a decision matrix for us to go through if we have time tonight or to be a homework assignment, because it will help us to understand some of the parameters that the village trustees as policymakers would really need to be involved with in order to advise this process because of the nature of a complicated and challenging dredging project. Do we reduce the material that's to be removed? Just dredge the deepest material in the center of the lake is a question. It leaves material in the lake. I know I've been working very closely with Dr. Gobler and the Lake Agawam Conservancy. And they're very enthusiastic about removing the material to reduce the release and influx nutrients to the lake. So that has certain negative aspects. Do we create those dredge material peninsulas or islands that are established in vegetation? That's a question. They all have their own pros and cons. I mentioned that, you know, material remaining in the lakes still allows release of nutrients to the water column. And there are aesthetic aspects. And where do you locate an island or a peninsula? So these are factors that need to be considered. The pictures on the right are a G O two project where you can see pumps and pipes and things that transport a slurry of material to the bags, which allows it to dewater. The center picture is a small dredge. And the lower picture is dried material being removed by an excavator and loaded into trucks. Again, I wanted to show these just to give the board a sense of the scale of this type of project, especially with the volume we're talking about. It is a very large construction project. So we've begun to examine options. And the village is very lucky to have a resident that is involved with some filtration equipment that has been an advisor and has worked cooperatively with us. And I believe is also working cooperatively with real associates on Old Town Pond. And I don't want to mention specifics, but you know, these images were, were given to us by courtesy of Z Filter, and the website is below. It's really just one company that produces a belt press that can dewater material. And that has that has certain advantages and disadvantages. If we were to use this type of technology, it would be a much longer term project. And when I say longer, it could go over the course of decades. But there are policy decisions that need to be made before we can even begin to investigate this type of solution. Such a process would be less disruptive. It would be smaller equipment. It could be mounted on shore or on barge. And we would remove less material over a longer period of time. We would also hope and expect that this type of process would be more effective at drying material. And that would potentially reduce disposal costs because it is disposed of by tonnage. So what I've done, and I hope this isn't running too long, but I only have several slides left. One is a decision matrix to gain input One is a decision matrix to gain input for decision making by the village that I mentioned before. And it looks like this. So we can either go through it now. We can do it as homework. I don't think I've spent too much time and I know this is very important to the board. And I'll just pause there to let the mayor and board members ask questions and see if we would like to go through some of these key questions that would help guide us and would also be very beneficial to moving this process forward. So, Mr. Mayor, back to you for the moment.
Thank you for the presentation, Jake. I have a few questions, but want to open this up to any of the trustees for questions. If any, I know it's a lot to digest or take in. So regarding the de-watering, I know I could always talk to Z Filter, but can you just talk to us a little more about how that would work? Where we might actually place the watering devices? And so there was positives and negatives about that, you know, what would those entail?
Sure. It would involve, it has options. That's one of the good things. And really, if you look here at the decision matrix, those items fourteen through seventeen have to do with, you know, the the number of acceptable trucks per day leaving the village. And it's really hard to get a handle on that, but we all know that, you know, truck traffic is not the greatest thing. We deal with, you know, landscape contractors and construction at homes. But that's a really important factor to kind of help guide this process. This could be done with one small dredge or even two small dredges. It could be done on barges where the dredge is already a, you know, waterborne vehicle that would pump to another barge that has a filtration apparatus, presumably a belt filter, which in our research is the best technology to apply here. And then the dried material has to be loaded into something. And that could go into a, you know, a small container barge and shore and picked out of the water and put on a truck. The other option would be to have a dredge that pumps the material through a pipe either underwater or on pontoons across the lake to some land base that would require obviously much less area than a de-watering land G O tube de-watering project. And, Mr. Mayor, we had the meeting about the, you know, other equipment that we're talking about. The algae skimmer would require much less area than that and could be staged in a relatively small part of the trustees parking lot or pond lane or property off of Pond Lane. You'd want it fairly proximate to the lake because if the press is located outside the lake, the water does have to be returned to the lake. So again, many options, which is why answering the eighteen questions here, you know, would really give us more information to solve some of these issues. And, you know, understand the policy decisions to drive the design. That was a long answer, but that's the best answer that I can come up with at this time.
Right, and just confirm, were there any samples in any particular part of the lake that didn't contain the arsenic? And or were there any parts of the lake that were particularly worse than others that would be a priority to dredge?
It was pretty uniform through the lake. I can analyze that further and get back to you. But my sense was and the sense of the D E C was that it would be very hard to isolate those areas and essentially, you know, surgically dredge them and have that material be available for a beneficial use determination or but. But I will analyze the data further and get back to you on that. But the thought is, and based on D E C and my initial review, that would be a very difficult process to surgically dredge and have two different disposal methods. I am having trouble here.
What happens if we don't do anything?
Roy is muted.
I can hear a little bit, but I guess it's being picked up.
Okay, number one, what happens if we don't do anything? And conversely, if we do do something, how do we stop the lake from getting polluted again from all the same stuff coming into the lake over the next twenty or thirty or forty years and creating the same problem?
Very good questions, very astute. My wife, who has lived with me for forty-four years and knows my business, has asked the same questions. And basically, you know, the first one, if we leave it there, and this is based on work that Dr. Gobler has done. There is an influx of nutrients, nitrogen and phosphorus to the water column that is causing algae blooms in the lake. It's not the only source, but it is a major source. So that's based on other research and, you know, we have no reason to dispute that. There are many other sources of contamination to the lake, cesspools, sanitary systems around the lake, stormwater inputs, wildfowl populations, atmospheric deposition and many factors. So if the material stays, you still have a major source of nutrient influx to the lake. It is somewhat sequestered just in the fact that it's there, you don't see it. It's kind of like the duck sludge in areas around Long Island that used to be farmed, you know, had duck farms. But it is causing water quality issues that we are seeing and are being realized in harmful algal blooms in the lake. How do we ensure that the lake doesn't get polluted again? If Gary is on, he can certainly speak to this, but Gary Galeski and I have been working on this for, you know, all the years and decade and a half that I've helped with the village. And reducing stormwater impact inputs to the lake is a huge benefit. You know, from the two thousand and seven through two thousand and nine, Lake Agawam management plan that my company prepared, we showed pictures of the watershed. It goes all the way up to County Road thirty-nine. Water gets into a pipe, you know, from systems and stormwater inputs and is discharged at the north end of the lake. There's been a huge effort to reduce that, to put stormwater protection in the upper areas where there's a better depth groundwater and you can recharge to the groundwater table and not have it transported as raw stormwater to the lake. Obviously, I A sanitary system improvements are very helpful. Examination sewer in the downtown is very helpful. And really, you know, all of the other things, natural shorelines, reducing landscape and fertilization near the lake. When I said it before, it's true. Many small incremental improvements are needed to improve the water quality of the lake. So dredging the sediments is one of them. It's considered to be a major one. But other remedies do need to be implemented and are being implemented that we hope would reduce sediment input as well as pollutant input to the lake. And keep in mind, this has occurred over, you know, a hundred years or more. So basically dredging of a lake sets it back in time, gets it to native or sand and gravel. And essentially sets the lake back in time so that it can, well, sadly, you know, it does continue to deteriorate. But you would hope to reduce that, retard it, slow it down and eliminate as much as possible. Again, a long answer, Roy, but, you know, based on all the knowledge that we have, that's the best I can tell you at this point.
I have a quick question.
Yeah, Joe.
In terms of the timeframe, you mentioned the three seasons. Go all out for the sixty million cost. I mean, if we were to do that, you mentioned the seasons, is it the from November to March? Or what was the dredging season, more or less?
Well, that's really to be determined by the village. Keep in mind, that was hypothetical. Again, anybody that is seeing this, take this as a project definition. It's hypothetical to look at the options. So if we were to just dredge the north part of the lake and use the containment areas that were shown in the graphic, it would take three seasons. And it would involve whatever season the village would define. We believe the material can be dried in two to three months. We examined input of polymers and floculents to help the material settle and to dry it and more effectively de-water it. If the materials dried sooner, it can be trucked out sooner. But if you figure roughly, you know, a three month, two to three month period for drying and a period of time for dredging, it really was a high volume dredge project, so that can be done relatively quickly. So the season could be, you know, November to March. It could potentially be reduced depending on the volume of material that can be dredged and pumped. There's a number of factors that go into that, so it's not an easy answer.
And also the sampling that you mentioned before. So there is no hope of having any organic material. There was some mixed evidence that there was organic at the south end of the lake.
I'm sorry, there does seem to be an echo and I had a lot of trouble hearing that trustee McGlocklin.
Sorry, so I, from what you said before about the sediment, so there's no, there was some mixed reviews regarding the sediment. Some years ago, I do recall that they were, there was some discussion of having some organic material at the south end. So I guess there's no, due to your most recent numbers, that there is no, there is no organic, there is no reusable material there at all.
And that really does go into the question that the mayor asked as well. Eleven out of the fourteen samples had lead and arsenic. Those are metals and they exceeded protection of groundwater. And so they're regulated by the D E C. You know, happily and maybe a little surprisingly, the volatile organic compounds were not present. And so that's the chemical organic compound. And semi-volatiles were just elevated, but they really didn't exceed protection of groundwater. So from a chemical organic standpoint, that was not the issue. The issue was metals. Of course, all of the material is organic from a biological sense because it's very silty. It has, you know, leaf decomposition material. So I did want to kind of separate the chemical organics from the biological organics and have that be understood.
And we have, very quickly, you mentioned diking. Now, how would that work? Just, I know it's a complex idea, but if you just briefly go into that.
Yeah, if you look at traditional dredging that Suffolk County Department of Public Works has done in bays and creeks all around Long Island. There are many areas where they, you know, you know, prior to the mid seventies would actually fill wetlands, create a burn, you know, or a large dike that would be in a circular area and it creates a containment area. Dredged material is pumped into the dike area. And usually there's a weir of some sort that allows water to flow out of the dike area, back to the water body. And the sediment remains within the dike area. That material dries over time. And there's many examples of islands throughout bays, filled wetlands areas, if you go to Indian Island Park in Riverhead County Park, as I used to do with the Boy Scouts camping. You know, there's old dredge spoil areas there that you can walk on because the materials dry. It's kind of cracked. It looks like, you know, a reptile skin or something. Those areas are all over Long Island. It was a luxury when that that could be done because you needed a lot of space. And there were environmental impacts associated with that type of dredging practice. More recently, in bays and creeks, if dredged materials ninety percent and not contaminated, it can be used for Here we have way under ninety percent sand and gravel contamination and a lot of biological organic material. So those types of options are not really available. And, you know, I did mention the diking because the first project I worked on with county in nineteen seventy-eight involved dykes in Great South Bay. But it's a different type of operation and you need a lot of space and we really don't have the luxury of space here. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Jake. There's a lot more to discuss, a lot more questions. But let's, we'll keep on moving tonight. We could always touch base later on to discuss the right course of action. We can discuss it with our board as well. Appreciate the update sediment study matrix. And happy Thanksgiving, Jake. We'll be in touch with a number of other projects that we're working on. I know some of our trustees probably had other questions, but we've got Tim, our senior building inspector, waiting to make a presentation and we've also got a nice serving group waiting. So we want to get through those and do the rest of our meeting tonight. So thank you again, Jake.
Very good. This presentation has been provided to the village. You're welcome to circulate it. And as I said, answering those questions will be the next step for me to proceed. And I very much appreciate your time. You all know me and I'm available to talk anytime. So thank you so much. Have a great evening and regards to Tim and the rest of the group for the evening and have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Jake, you as well.
Thank you. Okay, so we can let Tim in. Thanks for your patience. We appreciate you being here tonight, your time.
All right, so you don't need chicken anymore, right?
No.
Okay, he's gone. Ten is in.
Kat, we should have Mike Sapienza in as well. He's the support company.
Okay, sure. I found him also and he'll be joining. Ten, if you want to turn on your camera and your sound. Here, I'll send you. I'll send you a request if you can't find it, so. There's Mike. All right, Ten. Here, this is a request to start your video. And this one is asked to unmute.
My camera is terrible.
It's okay, we can see you. It's all good.
All right.
Jesse, did you want them to start?
Well, no, thank you. We'll just let Tim take it away.
Thank you, trustees, for having me tonight. Our current database municity is being discontinued. And I see that as an opportunity to update our database by going cloud-based, which would be internet accessible and available to the community as well as trustees, as well as be more user friendly as to provide information to the community at large. So Mike has been, I've been in contact with Mike from GovPilot and he's been helping me out. And I'm going to let Mike take away with his presentation there. Mike, how are you doing?
Thank you. So, hi, everybody. Thanks for having us. Am I going to be able to share the screen here somehow?
Yes, sir. You can do it anytime you want to. If you need instructions, I'm right here.
Okay, all right. I see I can get access to it now. Great. So let me know when everybody can see my screen. Oh, you see me? Great. So what I'm going to do is, you know, we've had these discussions with Ten for a while and Charlene was in on the last one. We've gone over a lot of different things that we could do for the construction department. I won't get into all the details and we've done that. But what I will do is I'm just going to give you a brief overview of what GovPilot does and how we can, you know, solve some of these problems that not only he's having with the current system and the fact that it's actually sunsetting and he'll need a new system anyway, but how we're also a much better platform in many, in many different ways. So if everybody can see my screen now, beautiful parks, et cetera.
Yes.
What this is, is a demo website that we created in order to just show in order to just show potential clients what it would look like if somebody came to their website. They come to the Village of Southampton, they wanna interact, they wanna file a building permit or a zoning permit, or maybe report complaint or code enforcement issue. They would be able to do it a little bit differently than it's done now. There's various PDF forms that you have on your website now. With GovPilot, they'll actually be able to interact with a digital form by coming on the website. Where that form is placed on the website is purely up to you guys. This demo website's got a ton of different forms because we do many, many, many processes, not just construction. But I'll kind of keep it simple and say, somebody comes on and you have them click on construction. They could pick all the different types of things you have here, you know, maybe it's a zoning application for a fence. And they could fill these forms out. The difference between our forms and a PDF or even a fillable PDF is now, soon as they clicked on that, they are literally inside of your system with GovPilot. They don't have to have a portal, they don't need sign-ins and passwords. And they don't even really know they're in a system, they just kind of feel like they're on a fillable form. They could fill all their information out. And once they go through here, some of the things we'll do to help the process, a lot of times these forms come in, they're not filled out correctly, they're missing information. Departments are chasing information down with, you know, wasting time, phone calls and emails back to the applicants. We have required fields that you'll choose. You can see the red asterisks and numerous fields here. So you're gonna tell us, these are the fields that have to be filled out, are we not gonna allow them to submit? Maybe you want them to upload documents that are required. We have the ability for them to upload documents. We have the ability for them to do e-signatures if that's required. And also something that was mentioned was the ability, which Ten Ho doesn't have now, to take online payments for certain things. We can also do that for you. Now, we're not a credit card merchant, so we're not gonna handle the money or the sensitive data. The merchant is maybe one you have in another department. We can make recommendations. We're simply gonna provide the link from that merchant, put it on this form so they can click and make that payment like they're used to doing in everything else in their daily life, instead of mailing checks or going down to, you know, the village hall. They could do it all in one shot. So a couple of things from the form. We've got the ability for e-commerce, e-signatures, capturing all the data in one shot. And the best part is, everything and all the keystrokes are done once by the applicant. Ten Ho doesn't have to, with himself or any of his staff, redundantly type in information into a software system to document it. That's all done for him when they fill this application out. Any questions on that? I feel like somebody's trying to talk, trustee.
Roy needs to unmute again.
Okay, so how much work is it to take our current sort of paper forms and get it into this nice, wonderful electronic version? I mean, how, how much stuff are we gonna have to do and how much time is it gonna take and who's gonna do that? Are you, do you guys help us do that? Or do we have to take all the stuff we now do manually and have the people come in and fill out the forms to create these wonderful kind of forms that you've just demonstrated?
Great question. We actually do all of that work in our onboarding process. The system is configured by GovPilot. A good example is we'd sit down with Tim in the onboarding process. He would have all the forms handy, the steps, the people involved in the process, because this also engages workflow. So if somebody submits a specific application, it's going to go to a specific person in a specific department. So it doesn't just go to one email basket or something. So all of that is configured in the onboarding stage. And we do all the heavy lifting in this process. This is not a project for the village. It's a GovPilot project. We will need time, we will need a point person, but it's in very small bites. We're not gonna come in there and take over your office. This is a cloud-hosted system, so we're not installing things on servers or devices. It's a very easy process on your end to get this up and running. And then once it's ready to do that, we do full training. It's all done via web. You can request live training, but it's typically not necessary. It's a very simple and intuitive system. And we do all that work. So the configuring of this form, that's also a great question because this, these forms are not set in stone. This is a template. They are manipulated by us to fit your needs. We give twelve hours of design team reconfiguration. So while this form may get you eighty percent of the way of what it needs to do out of the box, you've got another twelve hours and in design time, that's a, that's a lot of time to get it to where you want to be. We've got to be really malleable. We're in twenty-four states right now. So even though we're born in New Jersey with the most complicated permitting process there is, we could strip this thing down and make it really basic or beef it back up to whatever fits your guys' needs.
And have you worked enough with Tim and familiar enough with what we're doing now to get a sense of how long it would take to, to be up and running?
Our typical process in, in building construction departments, one of the more complicated modules, sir. But we, depending on when you get in line, you know, this is the time of the year in Q4 where every town and county is scrambling to spend the budget money from the year and we're getting a lot of new customers now. But we're typically on about a six to eight week turnaround for the construction module. Tim does have data that he wants to bring in, he's shared that already. That is something that we've looked at, so we know that that's part of the process. So I would estimate at least the full six to eight weeks for the construction module. However, he has some other smaller modules within that for other processes he does, like a zoning permit. That's a much faster build, that could be up and running quicker.
And sorry to keep asking all these questions, but last one. So this is just the building department. Does your software then encompass multi, multi-modules that would then cover sort of much more of what the Village of Southampton is doing?
It does, sir. We're designed to be an enterprise system. The only process, if you think about things like pet licensing, concern reporting, public works, asset management, parks and rec, we do all that kind of stuff. In fact, we've got over two hundred modules to handle all these various things that local government does. The only thing we don't do is we don't do financial software. So we're not looking to take over that, which most people aren't very excited about trying to swap financial software anyway, but that's one field that we're not in. And we don't do tax collection. So those are the only two things that we very specifically don't do. But yeah, you can get all of your department, all of your departments. And that's a great question too, because even with one module, everybody has access to this system that's on staff, elected officials, trustees. So you can have access to the system and all the information and data that's in there, whether it's just Tim doing construction or ten different departments. We don't charge by the seat. Everybody can get in there and see what's going on.
Hello, and this is Justin McGlocklin. What is the process for doing implementing this for the CFOs on all the day we have already? Because obviously we're very pay-per-view. Is the idea eventually to have all the data on the, of the department on this cloud?
So the question is, is the idea to take all of the data he currently has and put it into the cloud?
Yes, what I'm saying is to use your software to have all the historical data of the department on this software.
Yes, that would be, it's not required, but that's typically what construction departments and code enforcement departments do. So that, I'm gonna show you in a second why that matters. We have a way in our property profile that will house all those records. That's not only useful to, to the staff, but how you guys can choose to make that public facing to help cut down on foil requests, because the public can go on there themselves and see these records if you guys want to offer that.
Because we have a hundred, we have a hundred and thirty years of records, so I don't know how long it would take to implement that, but.
Well, whatever is stored electronically can be brought into the system. Now, the things that are sitting in filing cabinets or, you know, rooms full of bookshelves of paper, that's not something we do, is moving that. But we, we actually do have a company that we work with that will do things like that. They'll go through paper and plans and put them through an OCR and they'll put them into a digital file system for you, which then would be accessible through GovPilot.
Because that would be a great idea going forward, because we have.
Yeah, so we could, we could offer that reference to a, to a company called Foveonics out of New Jersey, but they have clients all over the, the country and they're very good at what they do.
And also, what is the timeline for implementation?
Typically, six to eight weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions on this front-facing part? And I could show you, I know we have a short amount of time here, but I'd like to show you at least a glimpse of the inside of the system.
Sounds good, Mike. Unless there's any other questions, a quick glimpse would be very helpful. We also have another board presentation tonight, so.
Great, so what I'm gonna show you real quick is if you were to log into the system as anybody could, that you wanted to give access to the system, you could set permissions. So not everybody can manipulate records. You're greeted with a dashboard. These colored tiles are data sets, shortcuts to information. Certain people might want to look at certain things, but somebody like Ten Ho who's processing records is gonna really slice and dice data so that the things he needs to get to, he could always get to in one click. He doesn't have to sort ten clicks every time he wants to get to building permits or inspections. He could set up a tab to get there quickly. And each user can design their own dashboard to fit their specific need. So it's almost like everybody's got their own system and again, unlimited users. Any questions on that dashboard? The property profile, I'm sorry, I clicked on a record. We don't need to get into the records, the property profile, super cool thing. So let's look internally. If I want to look internally in the system, which could also be a public-facing tool as well, this is our property profile. We bring in all the tax assessment data, that's part of our system. We also supply a GIS map that's tied to all of that, along with all the parcel boundaries. Whether you're doing one module or fifty modules with us, you get that. And what that does is that ties in with this property profile. So you could see property information, ownership data, tax assessment data. That's refreshed every two weeks. And then any records that are on the property, you're looking now at all records. So if somebody wanted to come in here and say, you know, I want to see what's going on. I'm a code inspector, I'm out looking at a property and I see something that looks like it needs a permit, do they have a permit? They could quickly, from the field as well as the office, look up any open, closed records that are in there from what's being created or any of that historical data that were, that Tim shared with us from his current platform that we would bring in here. So you guys aren't starting with a blank slate, but it's a lot of information in one place, which can help multiple departments on multiple things. Any question on what that property profile can do?
I guess, what is, have you ever worked with land boards, have you ever adapted yourself for, you know, zoning boards, ARBs or land boards?
Yeah, we have a, a, a module for that. We touched on it a little bit with Tim, but the planning and zoning board module will, you know, greatly benefits from all of this. But we actually have a module for that as well as what we did get into some depth with Ten Ho was zoning permits, which sometimes could lead to, you know, a zoning board approval or planning board. So we do have all those available as well. Anybody else? And I could show you a couple of other things and let you guys go.
I think we're okay tonight, I think it's very helpful. The only thing that we might want to ask for is, you know, basically just some training for our team here, building department. I mean, basically, this is a good glimpse of, of what this software can do. Definitely would help with adding transparency and ease of use with all of our building department records. Appreciate your time and also Tim for bringing this to our attention. And also want to thank our board for helping us, you know, push this forward. But I think that's good for this board presentation. I definitely want to actually get to Mike and the Nicert as well, but we're happy to reach out to you if, if you've got some time for us, for some extra tutorials.
I will, Mayor, I did circulate the cost analysis that Tim had prepared. Also, just to mention, I believe, you, Mike, you do provide, you, you do have a client on Long Island and other village, correct?
I think we have three others, Bayville, Byron Island and Manor Haven.
Okay, like Ocean Beach, is that what it was?
Yeah, Ocean Beach, correct.
Ocean Beach, yeah.
Okay. So, you know, it is, and, and they do, I think Tim actually reached out to them and they were very happy with the software. So, thank you.
You're welcome. If anybody has any questions, Charlene and Ten Ho both have my contact info. Feel free to reach out to me.
And Mike, sorry for the long wait.
Yep, I know. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, thank you. We've got, we've got a team from Nicert to discuss the HERS rating, the energy-efficient building practices. And by the way, just, we're halfway through here, but if everyone could turn their volume down when everyone speaks, that would be a help. So next board presentation is number five. It's a HERS rating and efficient building practices. We have Mike Neerman as the coach here for the planning commission. We have Neil Lewis and we have Andrew Manitt. And they're gonna give us a brief overview of the HERS rating. So I know Mike was also presenting at the town today, but Mike, thank you very much. We'll let you take it from here.
Well, thank you, Mayor Warren and the village board trustees. Really appreciate being here. I know you've had a long night, I have as well. I've presented this today to the town, who is moving forward in their process. East Hampton just adopted New York stretch code this past Tuesday. So Climate Action Committee is something that your board came to a conclusion back in end of the spring, early summer, about that there's, climate change is this, is this force that we need to deal with? And we need to reflect on how we can amend our code and how we can be a part of the solution rather than being a part of the problem. And so Climate Action Committee started looking at the New York stretch code, which then they presented to the planning commission, I believe, two weeks ago. And I have put together a little team here, two individuals from Malloy College who are contracted by Nicert. I have Neil Lewis and Andrew Manitt. We're here to present what New York stretch code is. And this is just kind of a, a introduction. Obviously, this is the first time the board is, has become aware of New York stretch code. And Joe McGlocklin, excuse me, trustee McGlocklin was present during the planning commission meeting. So he was excited about what we were discussing and wanted to bring it to the, the board's attention. Neil, Andrew, are you with us?
I am here, I don't know if Neil is, but I can, I can go forward.
Neil, Neil is not showing in the attendee room, I do apologize.
He might not have made it, he might have gotten involved with some other presentations tonight.
And so Neil, just before we begin, we'll, we'll keep it brief again. This is just the beginning and I, I mean, I would start with, you know, there's an energy conservation code within the building code and go from there.
Okay, actually, I do have a presentation that I can share my screen if I can find that. And I'm just gonna briefly tell you, I am the deputy director of the Sustainability Institute at Malloy College as well as the the Clean Energy Communities Coordinator, one of the Clean Energy Communities coordinators for Long Island. As, as Mike noted, we are contracted by Nicert to provide that coordination service for Clean Energy Communities, which is a program Nicert has started to encourage local governments around the state to to take actions that will save energy, save money spent on energy bills and reduce carbon emissions to mitigate global warming. On to the next slide. So high, they, they've identified a number of high-impact actions. When you take those actions, you're gonna reduce energy consumption, you're gonna save money, but you're also going to earn points and advance towards grant funding for your village. There are three kinds of grants, action grants, which you get just for taking the particular action. And New York Stretch, NY Stretch is one of those actions that gets you an immediate grant. uh, NY stretch is one of those actions that gets you an immediate grant. If you, if you adopt that action, uh, there are also designation grants. If you take, if you adopt four, uh, if you take four of these high action, uh, high impact action, uh, then you will get a designation grant of $5,000, uh, for becoming a designated clean energy community. And then beyond that, there are point based grants, uh, which are higher, uh, amounts, but a heavier lift. You have to do things that actually, uh, get a lot of, uh, a lot of carbon reduction. Uh, so this is, um, this is a list of all the different kinds of action, uh, high impact actions. And you can see, uh, I've circled, uh, the New York stretch energy code. It gets you an action grant, uh, since you're a, uh, community under 40,000 residents, you would not get the 5,000, uh, 50,000, you would get 5,000, uh, as a, uh, as a grant for the action portion, uh, but you would also get 1,200 points towards, um, a point based grant and the first point based grant, uh, you get is at 3,000 points. So that's just to set up what the, uh, clean energy communities program is about. Uh, now I'm going to talk a little bit about what New York stretch is. Essentially, New York stretch, uh, is a way to make sure that new buildings built in your community are built to a higher energy performance standard. Uh, New York State has an energy conservation construction code. Uh, the stretch code essentially takes that and makes some improvements, makes it a little bit more stringent so that, uh, the buildings that are built are, are frankly better buildings. They, they save energy. Uh, they save people money on their energy bills going forward. Uh, they, uh, are often more comfortable, uh, healthier to be in because they are just built to a higher standard. The energy conservation code, uh, has a history of becoming more stringent over time. What they tried to do with New York stretch is project where the next, uh, international energy, uh, code is going to be and essentially make code that's about that much more stringent than the last one. So it basically puts you, uh, one code cycle ahead and the codes come out every three years. Uh, so, uh, the, the codes council, uh, creates a model code and the state adopts it with some amendments. Uh, and then it becomes the village's job to enforce that code. But New York state law allows the village to adopt a code just, uh, uh, the energy code, not any other building code, just the energy code. You can adopt a more stringent code. Uh, and what Nicerta has determined is that, you know, the, uh, the advancement in, uh, energy efficiency in the code was not going to get the, the state to the, the, um, the goals of, of carbon reduction. Uh, so they are encouraging, uh, encouraging towns and villages throughout the state to adopt this stretch code to, to accelerate, uh, the stringency of the, uh, of the energy code.
Andrew, approximately by how much percent does it, uh, accelerate?
Well, it's
Building code.
Yeah, i- it's, uh, it's about five percent. Um, it depends. There's a difference between commercial and residential. Um, I'll, I'll get into the, some of the details of how much more efficient it is, uh, in a couple of slides down. Uh, so the idea of the stretch code is that it is, uh, it's, Nicerta has really done the work of, of compiling this code of creating the documents that you need to, to move forward and adopt it easily. It overlays the existing code and just changes some of the requirements to make them, to make buildings more energy efficient within, uh, when they're, when they're built. Um, it's, it's nothing is, you know, it's not cutting edge technology. It's all commercially available, uh, materials and techniques that builders use already. It's just, they have to use, you know, somewhat better, uh, than they would be required under the base code. And they went through a, a multi-year process of discussions with stakeholders and they came up with the code that they believe will, uh, uh, will make a big difference, uh, and, uh, in a way that does not, um, adversely impact, you know, people financially too much. Uh, so, uh, the buildings are healthier, uh, their performance is verified through testing and inspection by third parties. And it creates, uh, benefits for your, you know, the, your climate goals as a village. So mostly what they're doing is they are making the, the insulation and the windows, uh, the thermal envelope of the home tighter and, uh, and more, uh, more highly insulated. Uh, they are requiring, uh, more inspection and verification, but those are not being done by necessarily by your code officials. They can be done by third, uh, by, um, third party, third parties, by hers raiders, uh, who, who have been certified, uh, to be, uh, you know, this is their profession. Um, kind of like, you know, electricians will verify electrical codes. Uh, these, these guys verify, uh, the, that the energy code is being met. Uh, so, uh, if you look at, uh, this, it's basically saying that you're going to have somewhat higher standards, uh, in these various categories for construction. Uh, this is actually climate zone five A. I don't know why I have this slide. We should have four A, we're in four A, but the idea is the same. Uh, it's somewhat higher standards, uh, for everything that, uh, that you're doing in the house, uh, to make sure that, uh, the house is built to a higher standard or commercial building as well. Move on from that. Uh, and again,
Andrew, can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Here, I'm sorry, Ken Gray. Is, is this only for new construction or is this for upgrades as well?
Well, it's, it's primarily for new construction. Uh, it would be, the code only comes into play when, uh, when it's essentially, uh, a major rebuild, like a more than 50% rebuild. So it's new construction and some major renovation, basically.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. So again, uh, it requires actual diagnostic verification that the buildings are performing to, to the standards that, uh, are set out in the code. Uh, cause there have been many studies that have shown that when you don't verify, uh, buildings don't actually perform. They, they, you know, they check off all the boxes on the code, but if, you know, they, you know, they say this is the insulation we put in, but if it wasn't put in right, it's not going to work right. So the, these verifications are very important to make sure that, uh, that buildings are actually performing to the standards that are required by the code. And, and you're not just saying, well, they, they're showing us that they, they, you know, on paper that they told us that, uh, that the building will be built to code, but you know, trust but verify, I guess. This is the, uh, is the takeaway for that. Okay. So, uh, benefits, reduce burn on code enforcement officers, again, third party, um, comply, third party verification of compliance. Uh, things, you know, there, there are multiple ways to comply. Um, we have, uh, at the Sustainability Institute have been pushing to, uh, require, um, hers rating standard, uh, now it's called an energy rating index standard, um, that would basically funnel everybody down to that to make sure that, uh, the performance is, uh, is, uh, is reached. Homes are, are better built there. That increases their, their value. Uh, you're reducing operating costs. Uh, you're basically saving more on the energy bills than the increase to the, uh, uh, to the mortgage due to the somewhat higher price of constructing the home, which is
Andrew, I, I apologize for interrupting and just, I know we're supposed to be brief, but when, when you say homes will be built better, uh, can you just throw some quick examples?
Um, yeah, well, basically, uh, they will have, uh, requirements that, uh, the, um, the thermal envelope, the, the insulation, the air ceiling will be better. They will be tested with, uh, blower door tests to make sure that, uh, they're not leaky. They will, uh, have visual inspections of the insulation and how it's installed. They will have verification that ducts aren't leaking, uh, things like that. Uh, make sure that, uh, that they're actually, uh, built to perform. Um, and that the ventilation is working so that people, uh, are getting enough fresh air, but they're not pushing, you know, they're not leaking air all the time and losing their heat or their air conditioning.
And for commercial buildings and a commercial building, if they are to meet stretch code standards in certain instances, let's say they adopted appendix CC, they would have to, uh, they'd have the option to, um, install an EV charging station, correct?
Right. Um, the commercial code is also, uh, under the stretch code is also more stringent. It does require higher standards on, again, things like the U value of windows, the, uh, the insulation. Um, uh, there's issues about, you know, water heating and, and heating supply and things like that.
Being solar ready.
Solar ready. Uh, but yes, the, if you adopt the appendix CC, that gives the builder a list of six different things to make their building, uh, more, uh, to perform better on energy. And one of them is having uh, EV charging. One of them is installing solar. One of them, uh, is, uh, I'm blanking on some of the others, but they're all, uh, basically things that it's kind of a menu, uh, of something that goes above and beyond to make their, their, uh, their building, uh, perform better on energy, uh, make it, uh, you know, more environmentally friendly, uh, and there's six choices, but they have to pick one of them. So it's flexible, but it does push them to do more, uh, than
Well, it stretches them to do more.
Yeah, exactly.
No pun.
Gentlemen, Ken Gray here. You, you may have mentioned this already. I just, uh, I may have missed it. Um, because these codes are more stringent than what the current state codes are.
Yes.
If an individual municipality such as the village wants to implement these, do we need to file it with the state to get approval because it's more stringent or are these, have these been categorically approved by the state already?
Well, um, if something is more stringent than the, just for energy codes, for every other code, you have to get approval from the state before it can go into effect.
Correct.
Or energy conservation codes.
Such as a building code.
Yes, such a building code, any, any, any other type of building code, fire safety, whatever it is, has to be approved by the, the state codes council. In the case of the energy code, you still have to file it with the, um, with the department of state, but they don't have to approve it. You have the right to do that as, as a community as long as it's more stringent. So you file it with them. They just affirm that it's more stringent and you can start enforcing it right away as soon as you file it.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Okay. Um, so, uh, you know, again, it, it, it's jump starting. It's, it's pushing or stretching, uh, the efficiency of the buildings that are being built. It's, uh, it's encouraging the builders that work in your town to work to a higher standard. Uh, it's encouraging them to, uh, to develop their skills and knowledge base so that they are ahead of the curve, uh, for the rest of the state. Um,
So if I could just, uh, add, again, the village just adopted this, the town's contemplating adopting it. So if we're worried about stakeholders and builders, you know, bouncing between different codes, this is the, uh, on the south fork, this is the, uh, this is the direction we're all headed.
You'll, you'll be, you'll be, yeah, uh, East Hampton town just adopted it. Southampton just had their hearing, right, to, tonight? Uh, and they're looking very favorably on adopting it. So adopting it would put you, uh, in alignment with the rest of the, the surrounding, uh, region so that you'd, uh, there would be less confusion crossing over the village line as, as to what's actually required. It would be, it would be, uh, it would be the same, uh, whether you're in the village, out of the village and make things a little bit more straightforward for builders. Uh, now, if you're looking at, um, construction, uh, again, we're climate zone four A. It's about, it's saying it's the less than two percent increase in, in first costs in designing construction of a building, but the energy savings is, uh, 5.5%. Uh, so your simple payback comes out to, on the average commercial building, 11 years. I have, I have a document that breaks it down to the different types of, uh, uh, commercial buildings and they all vary. Some of them are much quicker. Some of them are a little longer, but they, uh, they average out to about 11 year payback. And when you consider a building's going to last for decades, that's, that's not terrible. And for, uh, for residential, again, we're in the four A balance category. So uh, you're saving about $300 per home, uh, every year. And that's a simple payback of about eight years on a, on a new home. Now these, uh, these estimates were done by Nicerta. They had, you know, highly technical people look at them. They're, they're the experts on energy saving in the state. Uh, they were done before the pandemic and changes in, um, construction costs, but we don't know how long those changes in construction costs are going to last, uh, and energy costs could go up as well. So, uh, there's, uh, you know.
So obviously Andrew and I can probably talk about this for six months. Um, we've talked about it with each other for six months, maybe a year. Um, my, why, should we open up for questions? I know you've had a, again, a very long night and, uh, I appreciate that. And we, we want to be sensitive to your time.
I do want to point out though, I mentioned the action grant up, uh, at the beginning of the presentation. Uh, the action grant is available, uh, if you adopt and put the code into place before June 30th of 2022.
So they just extended it, right?
They just extended it. It was, we're going to shut it down at the end of this year, but they extended it by six months.
Thanks, Mike and Andrew. Uh, one quick question. Would you recommend in addition adopt the appendix CC? Is that something that you'd recommend as well?
I'm sorry, uh, adopting.
Appendix CC.
Um, I think if you have a considerable amount of commercial construction and you want to have, um, you want to have the builders know that you're serious about energy conservation and renewables, I, I think it sends a good signal on that. And, uh, you know, things like, um, EV charging stations, uh, the, the market for EVs is is poised to, to go exponential. I mean, all the major car companies are saying that they're going to be, um, offering, uh, full battery electric cars. New York State has, uh, has passed, uh, a, a goal to phase out the, uh, the, the sale of, of gas powered cars in, I think, uh, 2035. So doing something that encourages, uh, building owner, building builders to to account for that is, is probably a good idea. Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, Andrew, we may call you as a, as a resource. I know there's plenty of resources available publicly as well. Um, definitely be.
Part of, part of what I do as, as a clean energy communities coordinator under the contract with Nicerta is provide technical assistance, uh, for any of the high impact actions, uh, that your village might want to pursue. So you can, you can use me as a resource for, uh, for the, the stretch code and, and other energy goals, uh, and climate goals that the village has.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board?
I just had one question is, is there a kind of accompanying series of recommendations for the actual government? I, I would hate to be in the position of telling everybody, well, you got to do this to your house. Uh, and the businesses, you've got to do this to your businesses, but here we are in, in village government. And the businesses, you've got to do this to your businesses. But here we are in in village government. Not, not adhering to best practices.
Great. Well, again, there's a code, so it only applies to new construction. But it would, it would apply to any new construction that the that the village did already. But there are other, I'm sorry, I'm getting real bad.
I think that's you, Joe.
There, there are other high impact actions such as benchmarking where you basically compile and report on the energy performance of the village's buildings. So people can see whether your buildings are are performing up to standard or whether there needs to be improvements in them. So yes, there are things that you can do that apply to the, the village operations as well that will get you points and actions and get you designated as a clean energy community, not just things that affect the, the broader community.
Yes, and thank you for your time. I do have one quick question. How does this apply, if at all, to historic or landmark, landmark properties?
Well, again, it's, it's primarily for new construction, but if a historic, historic buildings are essentially exempted even if they do major renovations. Because they're historic. That is in the code.
Great question, though.
All right.
Just one thing. To the builders, it sounds to me that there's, this would put on, I'm not that well versed in this. I'd have to do a little bit more study, but it sounds to me that it there'd be a lot more restrictions on the builders and homeowners to, you know, to what capacity and are there incentives for homeowners or, and builders actually, to take this on?
I wouldn't necessarily think of it as restrictions. It's just guiding builders to think more energy efficiently. And we've done this in the past. Again, the town has hers, which is just almost as strict as as stretch code to some degree. Our hers rating is thirty-five for larger homes above forty-five hundred square feet and fifty-four for below. And now it's going to go to fifty. So it's a small difference. And the village, you also have hers. It's not, I don't think it's codified, but it's a part of your application process. So builders and architects are already familiar with energy conservation standards at the state level. And now with you, you know, the village is just a slightly more stringent, and now stretch code is just, again, stretched. So it shouldn't be this overall burden. But it does require being educated. And NYSERDA and the, and people like Andrew Manitt and, and the, the people they hired at Newport Ventures are going to be doing these trainings for not only staff, but the people in the industry.
Right. It, it basically, what it does is it sets a slightly higher floor for what we consider the worst building you can build legally is. And as I said, it, it, they're looking to try to be advance it by one code cycle, so like three years ahead. So these are things that most likely the builders will have to be doing in a couple of years anyway. You're just, you're just, I think you're just requiring it a bit earlier than the rest of the state.
Which the builders would end up using to market themselves, just the same way they do now to establish their own credibility with hers. You know, because they've done hers in the Hamptons, it allows them to be more competitive elsewhere.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Andrew. There's, I, I'd actually be interested to know to what extent builders in our village are actually already following the stretch code. I mean, it definitely makes sense to be marketing a nineteen point seven percent reduction in, in energy consumption, just when you're building a new home, especially with the rise of energy prices. So I'd be curious to see to what extent it's already been implemented. That might be a conversation for another day. But I wanted to thank Mike again, the co-chairperson of our planning commission. We've got Andrew Manitt from the Sustainability Institute of Moye College and other colleagues as well. I see Sheila Pfeifer as well from our our Clean Energy Drawdown Committee as well. So I wanted to thank Sheila for being here. And looking forward to discussing this further and also looking forward to seeing what action the town will take as well with their public hearing tonight. So gentlemen, thank you again. We'll move on. Again, happy, happy Thanksgiving to all. We'll keep our meeting rolling tonight. We've got suggested resolutions. I'll let Charlene take, take those from here.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number one, resolve that the claims for the warrant dated November twenty-third, twenty twenty-one totaling five hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars and nine cents, or an A one-ten. General fund be audited and approved. We have a motion.
Motion.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Resolution number two, resolve that the reading of the minutes for the public sessions, session of November ninth be dispensed and those minutes be accepted as filed by the village clerk and the actions taken at that meeting be and hereby ratified and approved. We have a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Resolution number three, result that the Board of Trustees here hereby approves the equal allocation of federal Community Development Block Grant Funds awarded to the Hampton's and Southampton daycare center and authorizes the mayor to execute any documents that may be required to receive such funds. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Resolution number four, resolve that the Board of Trustees approves retaining the firm Stephen G. Leventhal Esquire to special counsel to the Ethics Committee at an hourly rate of two hundred and fifty dollars an hour for matters when Ken Gray Village Attorney's representation is in conflict, replacing the firm of Ted Sklar P L L C not to exceed an amount of five thousand dollars.
Motion.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Resolution number five, result the Board of Trustees approves the memorandum of agreement between Suffolk County Community College and the Southampton Village Volunteer Ambulance Emergency Services Incorporated, which offers emergency medical technician EMT paramedic AAS degree program and other EMT courses for non-degree seeking students. The term of the agreement shall be for one year effective January first, twenty twenty-two through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Renewable for an additional one-year term upon mutual written consent of both parties. The previous MOA was approved by the Board on November twelfth, twenty twenty, for the calendar year twenty twenty-one. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Post. Resolution number six, the Board of Trustees approves the purchase of the Building Department software GovPilot, a cloud-based solution, providing more accessibility and integration to meet the needs of the village and its land use boards. The cost will be appropriated for this fiscal year, including annual subscription as described in the presentation. Funds will be utilized from the Building Department A thirty-six twenty point four at an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. We have a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Quick discussion, Charlene. Do we have the exact cost of the annual subscription, any potential annual increases in price? I know we said it at a max of thirty thousand, but do we have any?
Well, the annual subscription in the, in the cost allocation that I circulated to the Board earlier, actually later last week, the amount of the software total with the build out was twenty-seven thousand plus any incidentals that might come along. I mean, seven thousand for the build out and the annual subscription is twenty thousand per year. And I would imagine there might be some cost increases, you know, that would be, you know, cost of living increases included in the years going forward. But that is an unlimited user license, as opposed to some other softwares that we looked at that were probably going to cost about sixty, fifty to sixty thousand dollars. The interesting thing, because it's cloud-based, there's always a subscription included. We have the same situation with our Questica software. You pay annually for, for, for the, you have the small upfront cost. And then you pay annually for the subscription, and there might be a slight increase in that.
I would do want to get this done tonight or quickly. Trustee, if you mind, is, we, can we turn the, thank you, Trustee McGlocklin. I was hoping that we might be able to do it further so that we can either lock in any future increases in subscription rates. I'd hate to do all this work implementing the software, spend hours and hours, basically taking years of of building materials, building materials, and then, and then basically doing all the work and then find that years later the subscription increases, you know, twenty, thirty, forty percent.
I, I don't believe that I've seen anything with, with like, for example, Questica gets us, I think it's less than two percent a year. The increases in our, in our fees that we paid to them. Did, did you want me, I mean, I'm just looking at some feedback from someone there. I mean, we could, we could defer it to December and we could get some more solid numbers on a, on a projected amount.
I do want to move forward quickly. Perhaps can we go back and and have just a quick follow-up discussion? We could always call a special meeting, pass a quick resolution next week on Zoom if need be. I mean, interested what the board has to say. I'm also fine moving forward with this, but just want to make sure that that we're not, not doing all this work now and only define that. You know, I don't anticipate the subscription rates increasing that dramatically, but.
In, in, for, for example, one of the other software companies that we looked at, Citizen Serve, their build out upfront was thirty-seven thousand dollars as opposed to the seven thousand that GovPilot was going to charge, and their yearly subscription was twelve thousand, six hundred dollars as opposed to the twenty thousand for GovPilot. So.
Ten, Ten Ho has his hand up.
Oh, great.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Ten, you may be muted.
He's coming up. Hi, Ten. Asking you.
I think you have to bring his phone in as well.
So I called Ocean Beach Village and the first thing they told me was that you should just do it. And and just sign on. They're a great company. What Mike and I have determined that the building department would need five modules, five or six modules. That's about a twenty thousand dollar per year subscription rate. When I spoke to Ocean Beach Village, they said that they said that they have signed on for ten this year, and they'll be up to twelve next year. So they have twelve modules, so that encompasses more processes. And that's, that would also bring up your subscription rate.
Ten, Ten, Ken Gray here. How are you?
Hello.
Who did you speak to in Ocean Beach?
Jackie, the clerk.
Okay, Deputy Clerk, okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
I don't know how, how much the whole, you know, like the inflation rate per year, but I'll tell you that perhaps the subscriptions and the processes might increase if we feel that we need them.
It's all right, and that's helpful. We could always go back to the drawing board later, but I think it is important to, to get moving on this, but just wanted to hear your, your comments there. And again, we can touch base with, with them later this week. Thank you, Ten, for the time tonight.
No, thank you.
Yes, trustee.
Yes, could you also look into the cost associated with doing the I believe Mike is solving for the, to do the historical, historical records as well. Obviously, that isn't evident until now, but if we can look at the cost of the spring to see if we can incorporate that into our, into our next budget to have the historical data uploaded as well.
That would be great. I would do that. Yes, definitely. So Mayor, would you, would you like to vote?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so all in favor on the motion? Any opposed? All right, resolution number seven, resolve the Board of Trustees approves Freddie Godnez as a probationary member of the Hook and Ladder Company Number One, effective November twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor? Resolution number eight, resolve that the Board of Trustees approves Amar Gardner as a probationary member of Fire Police Company Number One effective November twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. Motion?
Motion.
Resolution number nine, resolve the Board of Trustees appoints Lydia Palmer to the position of temporary clerk in the mayor's office at an hourly rate of twenty-five dollars an hour, effective November twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. We have a motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor? Post. That concludes the resolution portion.
Thank you very much, Charlene. We will move forward with comments from board members. First is our deputy mayor, trustee Arista.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone who came and celebrated our veterans on Veterans Day in Agawam Park. It was a terrific turnout. And I was lucky enough to go to a few other events throughout the village that, that day, and it was really a wonderful, wonderful day for our veterans. So thank you to everyone that came and and of course, thank you, of course, once again, for all our veterans who served our country with such honor. A couple of things happening at Village Hall. First of all, this year, we are participating in Toys for Tots. And it's the Long Island Village Clerk and Treasurer Association that is promoting this and Village Hall this year. This is their tenth year actually, and it's the first time that Southampton Village is participating as far as, from what I understand. Last year, they collected over six thousand toys and their goal this year is to at least get six thousand and one, maybe a lot more than that. So there's going to be a beautiful big box out on the steps of Village Hall with a nice wooden tall wooden soldier there. And we asked anyone that can to help out with this wonderful fundraiser for our village and to make some children happy. That would be terrific. Another big happening this week is Saturday. It's all about, it's a wonderful village. And it's a whole day's worth of events. You could find this in Village Hall. You could also find this on the village website and, and from ten o'clock in the morning until the lighting of the tree in Agawam Park, and it's a day full of events. There's also something very special happening at the Rogers Mansion between one-thirty and three. There'd be a surprise there. So many of you have children. Make sure you're at the Rogers Mansion between one-thirty and three on we have a special guest appearance there. So I hope you could all participate in this wonderful event that everyone in the village is taking, is a part of. The, the village, the Chamber of Commerce, the the SAC, the Art Center, the Library, the Cultural Center, Heart of the Hamptons, the Historical Museum and the Christmas Decorations Committee. So it was an event that everyone is participating. It's village-wide, so we hope to see you on Saturday. Thank you, and everyone have a blessed Thanksgiving. And we have so much to be thankful for after the last year and a half. So enjoy, everyone. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, Deputy, trustee Brown.
I'd like to wish everyone a happy and a safe Thanksgiving and look forward to everyone enjoying theirsself and we'll see each other again next month.
Thank you, trustee Brown. Appreciate you keeping it brief. We had a number of board presentations tonight, so thank you. Next is trustee McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I also want to just say to all the residents, have a very happy and healthy year, holiday, family. And also please, if you have the time on Saturday, please come out and join us at the parade. Four o'clock. It's a great event for all the kids and even for the adults too. So please get and enjoy. And also, again, I wanted to wish all the residents a very happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much, trustee McLaughlin. Trustee Stevenson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, it is the on the, on the eve of, of a great season of Thanksgiving coming up. Again, I, I offer my sincere thanks to all of those who, who helped keep us safe. EMT guys, the fire guys, police dispatchers, everybody who works to keep this village safe. Thank you for all your efforts. Christmas comes soon. And it's such a wonderful time of year for, for giving. But in, in my store in particular, where, where there's so many kids coming in and, and thinking about Santa, it does make me think quite a bit about those who are less fortunate and may not, may not get as much when, when Santa comes. So I'm so pleased that the village is participating in Toys for Tots. We are also a Toys for Tots drop-off point down sixty-nine Jobbs Lane. We will also have the box for toys for tots in front of ours, in front of our store. And we're also working with Heart of the Hamptons this year. They have dropped off some little red Christmas trees that people can come in and take a look at it and they're specific gifts that the children in the community would love to get. And, and those can be, those, those can be purchased. And also we are working with a, a wonderful local artist named Patty Grable who's developed a thing called the Spiritual Spoon to take care of people who are, who are hungry and, and for a very modest amount, people can come in and, and, and donate to the Spiritual Spoon and, and, and bring home a little wooden spoon ornament for their own trees, a reflection of the thanks the community has for those who support Heart of the Hamptons and their food program. So again, happy Thanksgiving to all and, and thanks to all for everything you do to make Southampton such a wonderful place.
Thank you very much, trustee Stevenson. I'll quickly wrap this up. I had a great, great morning at our Lady of the Hamptons. I was very fortunate to be invited with some wonderful students and teachers and other administration there for their Thanksgiving dinner. So we had a great time. It was great to be over at the school. Again, I wanted to thank Kathy for her help getting Toys for Tots running over here. And then also thank Shannon Wiley, who was also involved with the Southampton Village Gift Holiday Drive. So wanted to thank her and the businesses that have participated there as well. Also wanted to give a very big thank you to Bob Hand as well as to our deputy mayor and Steve Phillips and Paul Murphy for their help. Bob was, and his team were, was very instrumental in setting the showmobile to conclude the, the parade on, on Saturday as well as the Christmas tree lights. Just wanted to thank all of our respective Public Works Department, deputy mayor, the liaison to the department. And a very big thanks to Bob, our, one of our electricians who really helps out with, with all this. So without Bob and his team, as well as other new members who've joined us, we would not be able to do it. So again, thank you to all. And with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.